Good evening, everybody. Today is what we're here for. This is a public meeting for the old dairy site redevelopment project. We're going to give you an all encompassing review of the project. But this public hearing is one of the requirements for a deed loan that the city has applied for. To begin with, there's a sign in sheet. I believe everybody signed in and everything. If not, please come forward and we'd like to get this information from you. So, to begin with, excuse me. My apologies, we're just looking for... Oh. Sorry about that. We just have a PowerPoint presentation we're going to go through. The agenda right before you. Like I said, I'm Brian Yvaro. I'm the city engineer for Fergus Falls. We're going to go through the site description and proposed development plans. That's going to be handled through Mr. Steve Erickson from Fergus Falls Downtown Council. And then all the remaining contamination up to the next steps, health, what we've uncovered with the site is going to be provided by Mr. Mark Johnson with Braun InterTech. Braun InterTech's been retained by the city to go through this process. So, like I said, this is an overview of this project. It's retained by the Fergus Falls Port Authority in effort to clean up the old dairy site. In doing so, to address the needs and concerns of the citizens of Fergus Falls, particularly those directly and potentially affected by the remediation and mitigation efforts. Like I said, Minnesota Department of Economic Employment and Economic Development, DED, aka, is contemplating a loan that the city's applied for in the amount of approximately $693,200. As a component of this grant, we are required to hold this meeting for the public to get feedback and everything. Doing this meeting is a requirement under this program to become eligible for it. So at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Steve Erickson, and we're going to continue running through the slides.
All right. Yes. That's what I had. Down and up? Yeah. All right. Just want to make one clarification. The application for the funding is two parts. It is a grant. That's an immediate grant once the city does the work, or I should say, the Port Authority does the work of the demolition and cleanup. The half of the cost of that is an immediate grant to the city. That's what has been applied for. And the balance of those invoices are treated as a loan, again, applied as for a 15-year term, 0% interest, no payments for the first two years, so very good terms. The site is the former dairy sites located at 301 Bu Street. 301 Bu Street. And that is bounded by Broadway on the east, Barefoot Park on the west, Otter Tail River on the south, and Otter Tail Valley Railroad on the north. The site occupies an area of approximately 29 acres. The operational portion of the site is generally downward sloping from west to east. There is an old roadway that runs through the property to the west, and that is basically the low point between the north and south areas. The site is surrounded on the south and east by the Otter Tail River. It has approximately 3,500 lineal feet of frontage on the river. The dairy property was constructed in 1944, operated as a plant to produce powdered milk for World War II. Eventually was turned into a cheese processing plant, and over the years, various buildings were added and removed as part of that process. The facility shut down initially in 1999, and then closed down permanently in 2002. The property was transferred from Mid-America Dairyman to an individual that bought it for an investment. He has owned it ever since. The property has basically been for sale since, well, that'd be 15 to 17 years. So, there've been no takers on that. The western part of the property was a gravel pit at one time, so that area would be part of the future redevelopment part of the property. There was also a wastewater treatment and a rail line on the property. The wastewater treatment plant has been demolished to the point of its foundation, but the foundation is still there. The rail line was a spur access that came in off of what used to be the Burlington Northern Tracks, now that's owned by the Otter Tail Valley Railroad. That spur has reverted to the property, so it's gone and it's now part of the property. I think actually the site is a little bit larger than the 29 acres because of the gaining of that spur area. The property buildings are currently vacant. The structures are dilapidated. In addition, and I will show you a picture here in a minute, but in addition, there's numerous buildings that were torn down, so the foundations still remain there. There's also piles of debris that have been scattered across the site over the years. The next page. The next page is showing where the site is. If you can see that little tiny red area, sort of right in the middle of most of the city. Here's a picture of an aerial of the site. You can see where that little spur came into the site at one time, and that's the piece that's reverted to the property owner. The other note is, of the 29 acres, approximately four and a half acres is where the buildings are and where the contamination is primarily located on the site. The balance of the site is pretty much vacant. This is looking from, looking to the east over the roof of the existing building. I don't know what the height of that stack is. That's the plant originally, as we said, was constructed to make powdered milk, so they had coal-fired boilers in there, and those boilers were used to evaporate the milk and make powdered milk, but they also produced a residue of ash. And at that time, there were no regulations about it. So, that's going to be one of the primary cleanup item, and Mark will cover it when he gets to that. This is another picture. You can see Hillcrest Academy across the river, although you don't really see the river. And you can see part of the old building, and then sort of the red area there is a structure which was a washout area for trucks, but the building itself is down. What remains is the foundation. This is looking to the west. That's Otter Tail Valley Railroad there on the right side. The old Archie's property is visible there on the right side, on the north side of the rail track. That's currently Delzer Construction. The river is to the east, but with all the trees, you don't really see it. Earlier, I referred to a trail that runs east to west, and you can sort of see that dirt path there now. The proposed development is to tear down the building, remediate the environmental contamination in the building before it's demolished, and then clean up the contamination of the ash and the other items that Mark will cover. Once that has been completed, then there'll be two parcels. One of them is the river buffer parcel that fronts on the river, and I'm going to switch to the next page. This is an illustration of the site. Broadway is on the far right, and where that red ends, that's the boundary with Barefoot Park. So Barefoot Park is another four and a half acres, and the trail theoretically goes through there. So the red part is about 18 acres. That land will be held for future development. It will be sold. The master plan that was completed recently, December 2017, I think was the date, calls for that to be multifamily housing. So, the way that we looked at the analysis of this was as multifamily housing. The Port Authority can make their determination on what they want it to be, but the analysis was based on that. The area to the front of the red, it's in green, that's the buffer area, and that's a little over 11 acres. I think it's 11.3 or 11.4 acres of land. On that will be a future bike and walking paths. There's going to be, according to the master plan, river access, a parking lot, places where you can launch a canoe or fish or whatever. The city of Fergus Falls applied for a grant from LCCMR, and I can't tell you what that stands for, but it's the Minnesota State of Minnesota Agency. And they approved a grant to the city for $600,000. That would be used to help acquire the property. That is for the green portion. Now, the property was acquired by the Port Authority. There's a separate entity, the city of Fergus Falls. The city will eventually own the green portion, and they'll receive the $600,000. The red portion will be retained by the Port Authority and sold at some point for redevelopment. What else did I have in here? I think that sort of concludes the description of the development, what the intentions are. The intention is to clean up a contaminated property that's a blight on the city, has no further use as a building, and then to turn the site, which is essentially producing no income taxes or no property taxes, into part of the property tax basis for the city. I'm going to finish unless there's any other, any questions from anybody about the process or the site or anything like that, and turn it over to Mark Johnson. No questions?
Great. Thanks, Steve. Okay. I'm Mark Johnson with Braun InterTech. I've been at Braun for about five years, and then also consulting for about 30 years. Been working on this project since about 2016 or so. So I'm going to talk a little bit about the contamination and then the cleanup of the property. If there's any questions along the way, don't hesitate to raise your hand, and I'll try to address it. First thing, contamination, regulatory status. The site's been fully investigated comprehensively. We looked at soil, groundwater, building materials, so on. Soil borings, took water samples, vapor, vapor samples. So we've looked at it pretty comprehensively. Our study is complete. The main contaminants of concern are buried fly ash, bottom ash, with heavy metal contamination, and random debris. Also petroleum contamination associated with petroleum tanks. And all the petroleum investigations at the site are a closed matter with the PCA, so it's just addressing the residuals that remain. The main area of concern at the site is predominantly the northeast part of the site, where the cheese plant sat, and also the adjacent riverbank. There is a couple spots in the west part of the property where they had some disisolated areas of buried debris. Nothing too substantial, though, through our investigation. There's some asbestos, elemental-free mercury, some pigeon droppings in the building. That's all going to have to be cleaned up. Essentially, the main risk for the site is ingestion, inhalation, human contact with the soil and media in its present condition and during development. We looked at groundwater impacts, vapor intrusion, impacts to the Otter Tail River, and all those were determined to be relatively low factor, low degree, so... And I guess in summary for this, the site has an MPCA-approved response action plan, and also a contamination, no association determination. So what that basically means, as long as the plan is implemented and follow the plan, you're going to keep that no association determination for the contamination. It's kind of your safe, get out of jail free card, so...
So that insured, that's no liability?
That's a no liability. That's, the city and the port did an excellent job in securing that assurance, and that was the right thing to do, so... So here's just, here's just some maps that are showing the findings. This is the west part of the site, where there's some circles and some little tables. That's where we saw some exceedances, either in contaminant levels or debris. And then here's the east part of the site, and you can see the area, the northeast there is where most of the contamination was identified. So, you know, the next step for the project is demolition and cleanup of the property. The goals of the process are environmental stabilization of the site. We want to ensure that the soils, materials excavated for redevelopment are handled, managed, disposed in a manner consistent with the MPC guidelines and the RAP that was prepared. And then we want to achieve MPC required clean separation distances for potential soil contamination remaining in place, and that includes two feet below any buildings, future buildings, two feet below pavements, four feet below green space areas.
Mike, maybe we should say, for those that don't know, the MPCA is Minnesota Pollution Control Agency that regulates all state environmental...
That is correct. And then our site is entered into their voluntary program, so if there's any questions that do happen or occur during the cleanup, you know, we contact them, we walk them through the situation, and we come to an agreement on what needs to, how we fix the problem. Another goal of the RAP is to make sure you have an organized plan, means to address any encounters that are found or encountered during the process. Get enough data and documentation to support issuance of a RAP implementation report approval letter and a no further action letter, determination letter from the PCA. So at the end of the project, we want to make sure we have enough documentation and data so that we can go and prepare a final report and say, hey, you know, everything was done according to plan. Now we'd like to receive our no further action letter and close the site. There's also a fairly deep well on the property. We want to make sure that well is sealed in accordance with any regulation. And I guess another, you know, important factor of the, a goal of the cleanup is we want to reuse as much of the demolition material as possible as part of future road base material, you know, about doing...
Can you or Brian talk about how you're going to do the demolitions so that you know what you're talking about here for the reuse?
Sure. You want to answer that, Brian, or do you want me to, or... You know, basically, the plans and specs will ask the contractor to reuse as much of that material as possible. So the first step will be remediation. The building will get rid of all the solid waste, the hazardous waste, the bird droppings, et cetera. And as they demolition the property, the building, they'll segregate out concrete, bituminous, brick, and then they'll run, have an onsite crusher, and we'll have certain piles of that material so that we can use it as the road base or a trail base for the project. And I believe if there's anything left over, that material can be used for city projects.
And the contract will be administered for their observation, control of observation, and the stormwater management plan, when it comes to crushing and everything, all environmental particulate. SWIP addresses anything that's formal and run up to the particulate generation through the project, so that's all encompassing included in the fine requirements.
So the following actions during demolition and cleanup. As previously stated, we're going to make sure that we're going to remove all the abandoned containers in the plant and elemental mercury and the pigeons, pigeon mess inside the plant. In conjunction with that, any remaining asbestos, incidental hazardous materials and other regulated special waste items will be removed. And that will all be done under, by a licensed asbestos contractor under supervision of the onsite engineer.
Mark, if I may, the free mercury has been cleaned up?
Yes, as part of the no association determination letter that was received, the elemental-free mercury in the boiler room has already been cleaned up, so that task is done. And PCA has received that information. So after the, all the hazardous materials are removed, we'll start demolition of the building, including all subgrade features. Part of that work will, there's a couple underground storage tanks that are on the east side of the building that are closed. Those will be removed. Any drain pipes to the river, those will either be removed or bulk headed, you know, with the oversight of the city. Just making sure the proper disconnects. And as we previously talked about, we're going to be segregating and do onsite crushing of concrete and other masonry debris. We'll also be looking for the well. We believe it's below the south portion of the property. When we do find that well, we'll have to contact the Minnesota Department of Health so we can see what the construction of the well is and what the proper procedure is to abandon the well. But we'll need their involvement to do that. Then after the demolition, we're going to sequence into the remediation part, and that will basically be the east riverbank. And we only found the ash east of the building, east of the north plant building along the riverbank up to the road. We looked for ash along the southern part, east of the south building, but we didn't find anything there. We were told that that was probably removed when that salt plant portion of the building was constructed. The main thing with the riverbank for the ash, we can leave some of the ash material in place. We're just going to take out enough material to make that slope stable and prevent any future erosion. So we're going to start out with, when it's all said and done, we have to have at least a four-foot clean buffer cover, but we'll probably have to take out a little more so that we can have a stable slope. And that, the details of that are in the RAP, and will be further specified in the, you know, the project manual for the demolition project. That's, in summary, what we're going to do there. The other contamination area is between the building and the riverbank. And again, we just have to make sure at the end of the project, we have two feet of cover, clean cover below any roads or pavements, and four feet in the green space areas. So wherever we encounter contamination in those areas, we'll either cut or fill accordingly. Another part of the demolition project and cleanup will be, if there's any visible debris on the property, we'll have the contractor remove that material. You know, that includes along the river bluff. There's a couple spots in the west part of the property where we've found some construction debris. The contractor will excavate that as well. You know, during the whole process, we'll be doing environmental monitoring of the soils to help segregate any clean material from the dirty material so that if the clean material can be reused onsite. Any backfill that is brought in site for fill, we'll make sure that comes from a reputable source and a barrel pit, and is clean. We'll test that for, make sure it's clean. And then at the end of the project, for any ash that's remaining on the riverbank, we'll file an environmental covenant for the property, just a deed, a deed notice that goes with the property saying, hey, that there's some residual ash remains in that portion of the property, but as long as it's managed appropriately according to the plan, that, you know, doesn't pose a threat. The standards for the site are the MPC residential soil reference values and soil leaching values. They're the most stringent values the MPC has as compared to commercial or industrial standards. So at the end of the day, it's going to be cleaned up to the residential, the more stringent standard. We'll also be following the MPC petroleum remediation program guidance and the MPC unregulated fill guidance. Projected soil volumes, we have some takeoff numbers based on the conceptual site plans that have been provided for the new development. We're probably going to be touching 30,000 bank yards of soil, and we've got a budget of about 15,000 bank cubic yards that we're going to have to manage offsite at a disposal facility, permitted facility. Monitoring and oversight, again, during the course of the demolition and cleanup, the environmental professional will be onsite as needed to observe and document site conditions and contractor work efforts and represent the Fergus Falls Port Authority. We'll make sure the work is carried out in accordance with the plans. We'll assess for unknowns, and we're going to be collecting any necessary samples for inclusion in the final report to give the PCA. Here's just a couple diagrams. This one here, everything in blue, that's our demolition map. It's going to be demolished. You can see most everything's on the northeast part of the site. Here's the RAP, Response Action Plan map for the entire property. The shaded blue area, that's phase two of the housing development. But again, you can see most of the proposed actions, here's a blow up, are in the northeast part of the site. The red hash is the slope correction, and then the blue and the pink are the four and two-foot clean buffer zones. And, let's see here. Yeah, just east of the building up there in the north plant, you'll see a red square. That's where two large fuel tanks are still in place. They're empty, they're closed, but we're going to have to remove those. And here's a cross section of the, for the slope correction. And I just want to note here, when we get down by the river level, that's, there's going to be a clay or a synthetic liner that's placed behind the riprap to prevent the water from washing out things. Worker training, all the contractors and any professionals working in the site, they're going to have the OSHA hazwapper training that's required, and also, you know, they'll be experienced on handling hazardous materials, whether directing or handling. Health and safety, there's just a plethora of, you know, summits and plans that are going to be prepared that's going to help prevent the release of hazardous constituents to the environment, protect human health environment, protect site workers, make sure everything complies with the RAP, et cetera. These go, you know, some of these examples are, you know, they're all listed out here. There's a couple pages of them, but, you know, there's certificates of insurance and bonding, the SWIP, health and safety plan, building demolition plan, environmental operations plan. You're going to have a road and pedestrian right-of-way temporary occupancy plan, hauling routes. You know, there's permits to Otter Tail County and the city of Fergus Falls. MPC notices for demolition asbestos. A list of disposal facilities to be used for materials, disposal, recycling. You know, hold weekly erosion control meetings, lunchbox safety meetings, compaction tests. So there's just, there's a lot of things that are going to be done to document the safety for site workers, nearby residents, et cetera, so... And I guess just in conclusion, the schedule, the plan is right now to start this fall, fall of 2019, and continue through 2021. Should be pretty much wrapped up by then, unless there's some site conditions that present themselves that dictate that we need to extend it. And then I just want to note, when eventual, when the building plans become known for the housing department or the housing development on north part, you might have to, you know, update the RAP accordingly with the MPC just to make sure that, you know, there's no changes. And then the next steps would be, I guess, start pulling together some plans and specs for the hazardous materials abatement and cleanup and building demolition, and maybe start some... start some dialogue with the DNR and the Army Corps of Engineer for any specialty permits that may be needed. And I think there's a website that keeps the public updated on the progress of the project, and if there's any special things that talk about, you guys hold regular, regular medians to that effect, so.
I was looking to see if Andrew was going here. Maybe you could talk about the website and how you update it, and if anybody is concerned about where the schedule is or what needs to be done, they'll know where to go.
Yeah, so on the city of Fergus Falls webpage, we have a tab that's called City Projects. And Brian, our city engineer, does a really good job of keeping a log or updates on that page. So if somebody's interested in following along, I would say that's a good place to start. Otherwise, we do give just about monthly updates at the Port Authority meetings, which are held on the third Mondays at five, or at 4:30, excuse me, here in the council chambers, or reach out to us at City Hall at any time, and we'd be glad to answer questions or concerns that people may have about the site and about the project. You know, and with that being said, I think that concludes the presentation portion of the project, but one of the reasons we held this meeting this evening is to hear input, answer questions as well as provide this information. So at this stage, if anybody has any comments or questions or input, it would be a great time to hear those, and we have the right people in the room to answer the questions. And so we'll just open it up, and if somebody is interested, I'll pull the mic off here and bring it out to you so we can make sure we capture the sound for the audience at home. Is there anybody that has any questions, wants to make any statements?
Why do you want to add one thing? I, I.
Want to step up here, Steve?
This is Steve Erickson again. I did talk with Ian Kushner at DEED. They're involved with the Brownfield Redevelopment Program at the state, and they will be issuing a letter now to the Port Authority regarding the approval of the application. There'll be a period of time whereby the actual, any questions on terms of what the loan is will be done, and then there'll be request of a sign-off from the EPA on that. I'm not quite sure how all of this timing will take place, but I'm fairly confident we're talking about 30 days or so to get through that. There are requirements to make sure that the loan portion of this stuff is paid back, so that requires some city action and Port Authority action and so forth, and needs to be documented. Bill Sonmore isn't here tonight, but he's the one that deals with those issues with the city and Port Authority's Bond Council. So hopefully, we'll be able to put up, or, or Brian will be able to put up information on the website detailing when that, those approval processes have been received. So I have nothing other than that.
My name is Anthony Hicks. I'm on the city council and is also the president of the Port Authority. I'd just like to offer my support to this project. I think this has been, I've lived in Fergus Falls for 24 years, and this property has been a direct site for all of that. And this is an opportunity for us to clean, clean up a site and bring a piece of the river into the city and turn some property that currently doesn't generate hardly any property tax at all into revenue paying, and also would offer a public amenity to go across 3,500 to almost 4,000 feet of riverbank. So I think it's a good project for the city to be involved in. Thank you.
Other comments, questions, concerns? Anything to add, Brian, or Mark, or Steve? All right, well, thank you all for attending this evening. And again, if you have any questions or comments, feel free to reach out to any of us, and we'll get you the answers and information that you're requesting, and follow along for updates. Thanks for coming, everyone.